Staff is ready anytime.
Okay.
Crystal tells us she's ready.
Okay, great. Then I'll bring this session, 4:00 PM session of the November 6th Salina City Planning Commission meeting to order. First item is the approval of the summary minutes of the prior meeting, October 16th. Gentlemen, are there any questions or concerns or a motion to approve the minutes?
I make a motion to approve the minutes as read.
Is there a second?
Second.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? The minutes are approved as printed. The public hearing items today, number two. Item number two on the agenda, Application Z-12-22 filed by the Salina City Planning Commission requesting amendment of Article 6 District Regulations Division 10.2. Staff, would you like to elaborate on that?
Yes, Mr. Chairman. Back at an earlier time, we pointed out to you that we had determined that the ordinance form that had been adopted by the City Commission on March 26th of this year, that in that formulation, it had three subsections, the subsections being the Public Facilities District, the Educational Facilities Sub-District, and the Exposition Facilities Sub-District. And we determined in the attachment that was mailed out with notice of the public hearing that the Educational Facilities portion had transposed the three terms. And John will show you on page two here where Items 4, 5, and 6 have got transposed from the section of the permitted uses to the section under conditional uses. And that was not intentional and should not have happened. And I had thought that I caught that and got it corrected with the city clerk, but I did not, and that's how it got published. And it had really nothing to do with what the Planning Commission deliberated or recommended because the language there, including accessory temporary uses, signs, and off-street parking is not something the Planning Commission discussed because that's just boilerplate. Those three terms there are at the tail end of permitted uses in all of our zoning districts in the city of Salina except one. So it was an intentional movement of those. The purpose of this application today is twofold. One, to get a recommendation from you that those need to move back to the location shown here. The other thing was that we were, the Salina zoning ordinance doesn't have an abundance of unused section numbers. And the planning staff and city clerk were trying to shoehorn this section in using existing available numbers. And what has occurred, the other thing that is modified here is that the section has been comprehensively renumbered using a lot of, because they're not individual sections that are available, so we've got 48.1 and 48.2 and 48.3 that has those three sub-districts in them. And then the body of the ordinance with the bulk regulations in that are lot size and bulk regulations are numbered separately yet, including the use limitations. So this application was initiated by you at the close of your meeting on October 2nd. And what you did at that meeting was to postpone consideration and continue the public hearing on the zoning map changes to allow this corrective text amendment to be addressed so that when the map amendments were considered, it would be considered in light of a correctly formatted and worded ordinance. So John, if you could go to the second slide. Just to show you where we are. We are at November 6, 2012. This is your advertised public hearing on correcting this text amendment. Your recommendation today would go on to the City Commission, assuming that the recommendation is favorable to make the corrections. And then that would be adopted as a substantive change in the ordinance on second reading by the City Commission. And then that would be the adopted ordinance that would be looked at in light of the rezoning of the 14 individual school sites, which that public hearing would be reconvened on the 4th of December. So our recommendation would be to recommend approval of this text amendment, which corrects the original text amendment to more accurately carry out the original intent. And that original intent was that accessory and temporary uses, signs and off-street parking be permitted accessory uses in all three sub-districts, just as they are in all the other districts within the city. And I think our final slide there, John, the recommended format would be to recommend to the City Commission that the zoning text amendment be approved. And possible reasons for doing that, if you could, would be that the proposed amendment is consistent with the intent and purpose of the zoning ordinance and that it would not adversely affect the early development of the city. But that would be the format in which a motion could be made to recommend this correction, and that would move that on to the City Commission for consideration.
Thank you, Dean. Crystal, for the record, let me say I neglected to let Ken recuse himself. Mr. Kennedy has stepped down, as he has on this matter prior. Any questions, staff? Is there anyone that would like to address this issue from the public? Please come.
Thank you, Commissioner, I appreciate it. My name is Sandra Hernandez. I live at 1940 Starlight Drive. And I'm here tonight to basically say that I do not believe that this is a typographical error. I do not believe that this is something that was unintentional, unless it was unintentional from the very get-go. In doing research, if I go back, I can show that the agenda from January 19th, 2010, the Planning Commission submitted the application of Z-09-12, which was the original request of Amendment Article 6 District Regulations by adding Division 10.3, the Educational Facilities District. That was back in 2010. So this was an ongoing process. It is now 2012. This was discussed numerous times in meetings by the Planning Commission, at which time there was a hearing date set on January 19th. See if I got that right. Yeah, January 19th, 2010. I have the actual application infamly in the staff report from that application. And I'd like to point out that there was discussion with a date by the staff comments, March 1st, 2011. The Planning Commission went through a list of public facility types and provided staff with feedback as to which should be classified as permitted and which should be conditional uses. There was also a notation in the same staff report, which again was dated February 21st, 2012. This is the staff report I'm speaking with. On June 21st, 2011, the Planning Commission endorsed a list of permitted and conditional uses for the three proposed sub-districts. But then it said the staff would like to revisit the list to discuss whether some of the listed permitted uses should be conditional and some should be permitted uses. At that time, it was approved. And it's hard for me to believe that you would endorse something, you would continue to send it through over a period of almost three years, and then come back and say, when it's time to actually put it in the motion within the public use district, it was codified that way. It was put in the code book exactly how it was endorsed. There were no changes prior. There was thorough discussion on it. And now all of a sudden, it's a typographical error or it's a transposed error? I'm going to say that's incorrect. No, there should not be a corrective text amendment on this because it was approved. It was approved exactly as it was endorsed. It was approved as exactly as the Planning Commission put it through. And you had many opportunities prior to sending it on to the City Planning Commission, excuse me, Mayor Air, the City Commission to say, whoops, we didn't mean it to go through that way. But it did go through that way. This is yet another error. And this is what I've been trying to stand up here and point out, that there are numerous errors in this process. The other thing that I wanted to mention was I have the minutes from the February 21st Salina Planning Commission. Item number four says it was continued discussion of public use zoning district. Mr. Andrew, of course, presented the staff report, which contained the case file. I go down to the bottom of the next page. It says, "Mr. Andrew asked for feedback from commissioners regarding the draft public use regulations. Mr. Ryan stated that the draft looked good to him. Mr. Kennedy stated that commission and staff had been working on this issue for a couple of years and that he appreciated staff's work on it. Mr. Kennedy also stated that from the school district's perspective, the draft is well done. And while things might need to be changed, this Congress buy, this is a good move for the community and helpful to the school district." I go down to the bottom. "Mr. Kennedy asked if rezoning to the public use district would be required before the school district could do a sign and asked how long that process would take. Mr. Andrew stated that the first step would be for the City Commission to adopt the new public use district and for the staff to draft signage regulations for the public use district for review by Planning Commission. Then there would be a public hearing to allow property owners whose properties would be re-designated to the opportunity to ask questions and make comments. There was a motion made by Mr. Kennedy to send the public use district regulations to the City Commission for approval and for the staff to initiate and prepare text amendment to Article 10 regarding sign for the public use district." At that time, the signage hadn't been done yet. So there was a preparation that was going to be in process following the approval of this original draft. Segmenting the motion was Mr. Mike Sell. He segmented the motion and added that the agriculture component be included in the list of approved uses. The motion carried on the original draft, eight to zero. It was then sent on to the City Commission. At the second reading of the City Commission, it passed. It was signed by Mayor Angel and published in the Salina Journal. This is not a typographical error. This is a continued history of errors.
Maybe a, well, I just wondered, do you think it's a good idea that off-street parking and loading require separate conditional use hearing on school grounds and other educational facilities? Because that's the issue, is are these three substantive things really worthy going through all the burden of going through a special use permit each and every time? We've found a lot of trouble to define a new section on signs for this district, and the off-street parking seems to me like something that ought to be fairly automatic once you have a school facility. So why do you want special use, conditional use hearings on those sub portions of a school property?
Thank you for your question, Mr. Hernani. Because I believe that the people that live around that area have a right to decide whether or not they want to have buses parked off the streets or parked on the school grounds.
Well, you have basically two choices. The school district would have to apply to park the buses on the school grounds if this stays a conditional use, or they can just park on the street because that's what the streets are for. It seems to me it'd be better to allow the school district to go ahead and plan for parking from the beginning without a separate hearing.
And I think that the public has the right to have a decision in that. I don't think that there should be numerous permitted uses that just our Planning Commission and City Commission make the decisions for the people. The people need to be able to decide that for themselves, in addition with the electronic sign, signs as permitted by Article 10 of this chapter. The original draft did not include that. The original draft that took years of putting together prior to actually submitting an application. The signs, I believe that the people need to be able to decide, do they want larger signs, electronic signs? I don't think you should take that away from the people. The people should have the right to decide that for themselves in the neighborhood that they live in.
And we can do that if that's the, there's two points, I think, that are here important. And even if you believe as a commission that you intentionally did that, which I don't believe you did because it was never discussed in its simply boilerplate language that staff added without consulting you, or even if you believe that staff did it on purpose, you're not precluded from changing it if you believe that requiring conditional use permits for signs, off-street parking, and for the accessory buildings is unnecessary. You are the Planning Commission, and any, the amendment can be initiated and regardless of intent, regardless of fault, regardless of anything else, if you identify something that you think is in need of change because it's out of step with everything else, I think what we tried to point out to you at the October 2nd meeting was if you live across the street from Stewart School today, and Stewart School is zoned R1, single-family residential. And in the R1 district, off-street parking and loading, signs and accessory buildings are permitted accessory uses. They're not conditional, even in residential districts. And the intent was simply to carry that over to the public use sub-district, the Educational Facilities Sub-District, and the public exposition sub-district. We made it on two out of three. It got transposed in the middle one. I'll apologize for that. I'll take responsibility for that if necessary. I thought I caught it and got the city clerk to move it to the correct portion. I was not successful. But even if you believe that it was all staff's fault or we did it intentionally, it doesn't preclude you from changing it if you think it's wrong. And if you're putting yourself in the shoes of Unified School District Number 305, why would you want to reclassify Stewart School from single-family residential to public use so that you could require that your parking and that your signs and that your accessory storage buildings be, go through a conditional use permit process when if you left it zoned residential, you wouldn't? And so we can go through that exercise, and we can put up the 20 out of 21 zoning districts in the city of Salina where signs and off-street parking and accessory buildings are permitted accessory uses, and we can demonstrate that. Then you have to ask in your own minds, why on earth would we want those three things to be conditional in the Educational Facilities Sub-District when they're permitted in the public use sub-district and the exposition sub-district and in 20 out of the 21 zoning districts that we have within the city? From staff's perspective, it was completely unintentional. You weren't consulted. Those three things are boilerplate phrases that get added to the permitted use section in every zoning district in the city, and they got misplaced in the Educational Facilities portion. I let it get by me. I thought I caught it. The clerk's office didn't change it, and I'll take responsibility for it. But if you think it needs to be fixed, you have a prerogative to say, we recommend that this get changed.
Hi.
Go ahead.
Mr. Hernandez. I believe that, and my intention, what I've got on here is that I believe that it is in the best interest to have the proper zoning for the schools and take them out of single-family to have that done. Not speaking for any other commissioners that are up here, but my role in you saying that this is done by eight to oh, and all these votes went through and this went through, I just want to explain to you my role. You may act different up here, but my role is to trust city staff in putting the amendments and putting this in front of us. My role and for the community is to look at it and say, does this make sense? I'm not an attorney. I don't spend every day looking over every particular letter, word, or item. I trust city staff that they put this together and are doing that correctly. Time to time, people will make mistakes, wouldn't you agree?
I think there's been extensive mistakes.
Have you ever made a mistake?
Well, of course I have.
Okay.
But you've learned of your mistakes.
Yes, he has learned. And each time that we put this in front here, as myself to sit here and continue with this, when he admits that there have been mistakes, all I'm looking for and all you're looking for is the community to get it correct. I appreciate you coming to every one of these meetings and finding the mistakes, and that's part of your community. You've done a great job. And someday, I hope that if you can look at that that close and you want to participate in this board, that would be great. All I'm saying is if you believe that this commission and this city staff held some vacuum meeting to try and hide buses or something different from that, and you're saying that you don't believe that that was a miscalculation or a misprint, I take offense to that because you're basically stating that we were trying to hide something from the community that I volunteer for. And if that's your statement, that you think that we were trying to hide something, that is, my moot as buses on streets, as Abner said, or parking on the, you know, that is tough for me to handle.
I'm going to say the same thing that I've said ever since I started coming up here, is that once I got involved in this process, I mainly learned a lot. I've done a lot of research. I've seen the background on how the city does things, and I've found a lot of errors. And that's why I'm here. Because, Mr. Andrew, you did not find the errors. I was in a meeting with you together when we looked at that. It was not you, sir, that found the error of those three things. Do you recall that meeting?
Yes.
We were together, we were the other side, but it was pointed out because I brought it to your attention, and that's when you said, oh, that was not supposed to be there.
If that's your story, that's your story.
It's not a story.
The fact remains that if the Planning Commission thinks that the previous action of making those conditional uses is not the right thing for the city of Salina, they have the authority to recommend that it's changed. And if they want to blame me or you want to blame me, that's fine. But I brought it to everyone's attention as soon as I recognized that that was published that way, and that's why we're here today.
Okay, are there any other commissioners that have questions of Mrs. Hernandez?
What's the real issue here? I'm confused.
The real issue is this process that I've been following. I've gone back, and there's been error after error. This process is being pushed.
Doesn't seem to get the issue to me.
That is the issue. And the other thing, the other thing is that the public needs to have a voice to what goes on in the city. I don't believe, I don't believe.
Who's here to voice? I mean, we've had this in the newspaper. We've had different issues publicized on television. But I don't see anybody else here but you. And I understand, I appreciate you being here. I really do. But the, it seems like the issue here is whether we do the best for the public at this time. And it looks like, to me, that changing ways and putting the amendment to a text to this is the best for the public. I don't understand what the, the mistakes are made, and we're sorry for that.
Now, will this continue in a legislative process or will it go right back into quasi-judicial? Because right now, we're in a legislative process because of the corrective text amendment. Prior, we were the quasi-judicial, where the public didn't have, they could speak at the meetings, but there wasn't very much public. I understand that. And so I'm addressing the commission and asking, is that what's going to happen? Is that the process now that it's?
Would you like to address that?
I'll obviously address, I'll address the statutory notice requirement. Any amendment that is to the zoning text, which applies citywide to multiple properties or areas, is a text amendment that is a legislative matter. It may be lobbied on, it may be persuaded on, but the requirement is that the notice of that hearing and that subject be published in the Salina Journal 20 days before the Planning Commission takes that up. That is the nature of the notice because it doesn't apply to a specific piece of property. If you have an application, such as you consider it on the 18th of September to put flagpoles in Indian Rock Park, that is a specific application that applies to a specific piece of property. And the requirement for notice there is publication in the Salina Journal 20 days before the hearing, as well as mailed notice to, in that case, property owners within 400 feet of Indian Rock Park. So in that particular aspect, because it is application-specific and property-specific, that is a quasi-judicial action. And so individual notice to adjoining property owners is required. If you are looking at something that is a code requirement that's going to apply generally citywide, then your only notice for that is publication in the Salina Journal 20 days ahead. And so right now, this afternoon, you are wearing the hat of a legislature, and your goal here is to legislate the rules that you think make the most sense for the city of Salina. And when you convene on the 4th of December to look at the individual school sites, then you will be back in a quasi-judicial mode, and you will be evaluating those locations school by school.
And you showed us in your original presentation the agenda for that.
Yes. And so, John, if you want to go back to the.
I don't think we need to go back there. As chairman, I want to make sure that there's an ample opportunity for public comment on this text amendment. So I'm going to ask you, Mrs. Hernandez, if there's any other issues that you want to address on this text amendment, at this point, on the revision that we want to make to correct it. And if not, then I'd ask you to conclude your remarks, and I would offer the floor to any others that want to speak.
Absolutely. Thank you very much for your time, Commissioner.
May I just add something? I think, perhaps I'm just interpreting an.
I think, perhaps I'm just interpreting, and perhaps to be clear in my own mind about this, but when Mr. Andrew refers to the December 4th meeting where specific hearings will be held about whether these properties will be converted to public use, you know, there's an opportunity there for the public to speak. So, yeah, it seems like the opportunity for public input is not dead, if my understanding is correct. And just a note, I think what Ms. Walsh and Ms. Bosomire are saying also is that you attract more flies with honey than with vinegar. And regardless of what's happened in the procedure before, what I think you're after is precisely to have, as you've said, public input and a say in what happens. And I think all of us are in concert with that motive. I think there are the people who want to speak on different properties, those people can be here, whether through your urging or anybody else's. So I still think the right of the public to hear is being met by the commission.
Thank you very much, I respect that, Mr. Perney.
Sure. Thank you for your comments. Is there anyone else that would like to address this text amendment? There being none, I'll close the public portion of this on this item. Are there other comments from the commissioners or remarks they'd like to make? Is there a motion on the item?
I have a comment that may lead to a motion. Being there has some challenges, but it also has some advantages. All the dates that were mentioned earlier happened before I got here. So really, I have an opportunity to look at what I saw in the last two meetings, and it appears to me to be very clear that moving those three back, or I don't know whether it's back or not, moving them where they're being proposed to be moved today is consistent with the zoning ordinances. I don't think that it's going to affect the early development of Salina, and I don't think it's going to endanger public safety or health in any way. So I would be willing to make the motion that we recommend the City Commission that the zoning text amendment be approved for those reasons. Number one, that it's consistent with the intent. Two, that it will not adversely affect. And three, that it will not endanger the public safety.
The chair accepts the motion, is there a second?
Sure.
Second. Any other comment or remarks? All those in favor, vote aye.
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 Any opposed? The motion carries. Thank you, everyone, for your time on this. And, Mr. Hernandez, your opportunities for public comment as the matter comes before in the other forums is fully open to you. Other matters?
Other matters, last night, Salina City Commission met and considered an application to place the three flagpoles as potential seller service supports in Indian Rock Park, and they voted five to zero to deny that application, concurring with your, they essentially concurred with your findings and conclusions and adopted those as their own. So that would be final action on that application. I think Mr. Norland and Mr. Perney were active attendees at the North Salina workshop that was held the 25th and 26th, that in, now if either of you two, for the benefit of the other members, wanted to give any observations of your experience in that, or what you learned or didn't learn from that, but they were both there for the Friday session.
That's a risky proposition, ask if there'd be benefit by our observations, but.
Five-minute time limit.
I know. I mean, just from my perspective, it was certainly a very healthy exchange of ideas. There were, for other members, there were several plans that were put together with a map, and different groups came up with different ideas of what might be best located for maximum public use. There was some agreement on possible projects, some disagreement, and it was a good place to air them. One of my personal concerns is about the food desert that was, is created by federal designation, that that term, food desert, may be a little bit too graphic, but from Crawford Street on north. And certainly, I think it deserves some consideration by the whole community, whatever solutions might be reached.
Well, I actually didn't get to participate with the Friday event, other than to come by and say hi in the morning because of other personal matters that came up unexpectedly. But the Thursday night session, and John Blanchard did a really good job of summarizing the work that the North Salina Community Development Program has been doing over the last couple of years. And I'm trusting that there'll be a full report on what they accomplished this last session. But it looked good, they had some really unusual, some unexpected ideas from things that could happen in North Salina, and it's always good to suggest some things that are a little bit out there, just to kind of break our tendency toward conventional and shallow thinking. So I thought it was a good session, from what I was able to observe.
And a summary of those things and some of the ideas that materialize may come forward to you in the form of a future study session. So that will give all of you exposure to some of the ideas that were developed. But that's all we have for you this evening. We will meet on the 20th of November, and we've got several items for you there. There's a property on the north side of Schelling Road that Mr. Byquist has that is a large platted block that's zoned for office use, and he wants to replat a portion of that for single-family housing on Ilean Lane, which is the first street north from Schelling Road. So that'll be one of the items on your agenda, the 20th. And then we have an application to establish a tattoo parlor in the former gas station on South Ninth Street, somewhat across from Stutzman's Greenhouse there. So we'll have those two as public hearing items.
Those tattoo parlors. We are adjourned.
Okay.